Alright, we'll open the meeting at six oh one. April twenty six, twenty twenty three with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To play form and disclose conflicts of interest. Adjustments to the agenda. Public to speak on non-agenda items. Review the minutes, April twelfth, twenty twenty three, under regular meeting. The motion to accept. Give a second, second. All in favor? New business, conditional use permit application, Beth Brunswick Memorial Fund, Loon Lake Road, map zero zero eight law and zero six seven dash B. Accept the application as complete, schedule a public hearing. I'll make the motion. Second. Continue in business, shoreline zone. But hold on, before we go that far here, so we're doing a childcare facility in the residential zone. We don't have anything in our menus tables without, so how are we gonna, what is this?
So, so we reached out to the town attorney, Kristen, for interpretation on that one because of that exact issue.
Right.
And under current zoning with current chapter thirty eight, she said this use and the description we received would fall under, I believe it was. It was institutional because it's defined as a non-for-profit.
Business.
Yeah, if you look in the definitions.
So institutional here. So that, so we're gonna go with institutional.
Correct, and that's other current, the, just for reference, we also talked about the, the changes to chapter thirty eight which are proposed, and that specifically spells out daycare.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's why they're here now.
Right.
Because those are the current rules, so that was what we got from the town attorney.
That is the residential zone.
Yes.
Right, that's fine, so that's what we're going with on that, so we need to schedule a public hearing. So schedule a public hearing. Would be. I need a motion. Six of April. So we have to notify. Is May tenth too soon to notify? So motion for May tenth? Yeah, I'll give you a motion for a public hearing. At six feet. Second. All in favor? That's it for now.
Thank you.
Continue in business, shoreline zone from eleven, Orange Street, map thirty seven, law zero seven four. Motion to approve or deny. I'm sorry. Complete filing of facts. The applicant has standing to present this application as the owner. To authority, the planning board, oh, sorry. All in favor? Authority, the planning board has the authority to consider this request for expansion and repair, replacement of the structure as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash one and thirty eight dash three dash three dash five of the Ransay Town Code. The code enforcement officer made determination on oh three twenty eight, twenty twenty three, the application proposed building permit is within the required setbacks from the normal high water line of the water body Haley Pond. And so the application has been referred to the planning board. Motion. Is that right? Because it's not really within the required setbacks.
Yeah, so. This one right is lateral because there's no other place to go, right?
Right. Motion that we accept the application is complete. So you need a. Wrong motion. I'll give you a motion that the planning board has the authority to. To consider the request for expansion. Second. All in favor? In determination whether the practical alternative exists as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash one dash two and thirty eight dash three dash three dash five dash two of the Ransay Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. The size of the law. Which is.
No, yeah, prior to, yeah. This is why they do the non-conforming.
The shape.
Legal.
Yeah, the, the shape and the slope of the land. And what should we put in here, Marty? Satisfactory, yes, no, maybe? The location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties. D, the location of septic system and other onsite soil suitable for septic system, that's town. Existing architectural plan. Yeah, well. Maybe.
Uh, yeah, we have land.
Potential for solar erosion control, I'm sorry, potential for solar erosion. Ask the media to take care of that. No vegetation. The type of amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish relocation, none. Based on three point A dash above the planning board finds there is or is not a practical alternative to retain the original floor area and volume of destruction within the required setback area. Is or is not.
So do you guys have questions on what's being done there or?
No, we went through it earlier. So that would be a motion, there is no practical alternative. Right?
Right?
Alright, so I give you a motion that there is not a practical alternative with a thirty percent extension. With thirty percent. Need a second? Second. All in favor? Due to the nature and size of the expansion, the planning board requests that written notice is or is not mailed to the director butters of the property and as part of consideration for significant adverse impact upon the value and right of quiet possession of surrounding properties. I make most of that written. Notice is not required. Second. Second. All in favor? Therefore, based on the findings in this worksheet and conditions listed below, the planning board concludes that the proposed project is or is not eligible for the thirty percent expansion while remaining within the required shoreline setback area. Motion that. It is eligible for the expansion. Second. All in favor? Conditions, if any, required to ensure compliance with the above sections of the Ransay Town Code. Alright, so this is where we have to talk about this. So, DP. Does say. For structures located less than seventy five feet from the normal high water line of the water body tributary stream or upland edge of a wetland, the maximum combined total footprint for all structures may not expand to a size greater than a thousand square feet or thirty percent larger than the footprint of the existed on January one nineteen eighty nine. Whichever is greater, the maximum height of any structure may not be made greater than twenty feet or the height of the existing structure, whichever is greater.
Hello?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Um, so that's in our ordinance right now?
No.
Right.
We were told, and maybe we want to talk to the attorney about it before we go any further with this application, but it's our understanding that trumps our ordinance.
And I guess. I have two clients, one is with the law firm, what's not, and I asked them both to check with their law firms, one is does with the W. or something, how old? Anyway, his opinion is that if it's not your ordinance, you can't enforce it yet. I know even though it's passed the state in two fifteen and we, you know, they're sort of saying it's not mandatory, it used to be a mandatory like three years, they were asking us to, you know, enact it or put it in your ordinance, so I guess I would say that. You know, the clients are saying, and their attorneys are saying that if, if it's not in the ordinance, then can't enforce it right now.
I don't think we have the ability to make that determination, either way, I think we should get clarification from the attorney unless you have some sort of.
Which, which point are you trying to?
The, the, the height of the structure.
Trying to enforce the one thousand guidelines.
Yeah, which, from my understanding, has always been enforced or should have been enforced.
And I guess. You know, I can talk with my clients and see, I mean, that's why I wanted to clarify with them before we made any proposals to say.
For this particular project, though, eleven Prong Street, there's no increase in height of the structure.
Oh, well, no, not really, I mean, might be a foot or two because we got to put a foundation.
Well, that's putting the foundation, which is covered under a different part outside of chapter, that, okay, that's clearly covered under our ordinance.
Well, not some of the other stuff he was reading.
Some of the other stuff, yeah, but that's why I specifically, what are we talking about?
No, no. No, we're good on that one.
Okay.
We're good, so our concern was the foundation, that was it.
Yeah, our, our.
And it was only to cover us.
We can dig it up, okay.
But if Kyle's saying that the foundation is not included in that height of.
Well, when you put a foundation, we've discussed that you can only raise the structure, I believe it's, is it two or three feet? I think it says three feet, yeah, yeah, you'll be.
Okay.
Built in status.
So we're. I'm gonna continue then.
Okay.
Number six, determination based upon the proceedings, findings, and conclusions, the application for this project was shoreline zone and is hereby one granted, two granted with the noted conditions, three denied due to findings. I make a motion that it's granted. I need a second. All in favor? Sorry for the confusion, but that's just, it's something that we have to look at.
That's just a reference, that foundation part is on page thirty eight, oh eight, where it says existing structure, create a new foundation on it.
No, it's just a question that we had.
Can't raise by more than three additional.
With everything that's happened in the town in the last six months. I'm gonna be.
Yep.
So then we can move to. I don't have a track filing sheet for that. I stole Wes's. So this is continuing business, shoreline zone only permit, forty LOB drive, map zero two five law zero zero four. Complete findings, in fact, worksheet. Number one, standing, the application has standing to present the application as the owner. Or as owner. Yeah, I need a motion, except that. Second. Second. All in favor? Authority, the planning board has the authority to consider this request for expansion, repair, or placement of a structure as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash one and thirty eight dash three dash three dash five of the Ransay Town Code. The code enforcement officer made a determination on goal three twenty eight, twenty twenty three, the application, applicant's proposed building permit is within required setbacks from the normal high water line of the water body Grange Lake. And so the application has been referred to the planning board. The emotion. Second. All in favor? We determine, in determining whether a practical alternative exists as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash one dash two and thirty eight dash three dash three dash five dash two of the Ransay Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following, A, the law, the size of the law. To be the shape and slope of the land. C, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties. E, the location of the septic system. And other onsite soils suitable for septic system. E, the existing architectural plan. F, the potential for solar erosion, G, the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. Based on. Three dash A, above the planning board finds there is or is not a practical alternative to retain the original floor plans and volume of the structure within the required setback area. I can listen that there. But there is not. Second. Second. Four, due to the nature and size of expansion, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? Why do I forget that? Due to the nature and size of expansion, the planning board requests that written notice is or is not mailed to the director butters of the property as part of the consideration for significant adverse impact upon the value and right of quiet possession of surrounding properties. Well, I make the motion that. Written notice is mailed.
Which is fine, because both neighbors are real, and the one neighbor that's really close. He's within setbacks.
Right.
And he's happy that.
Right, well, just since we're gonna have to go through various.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they, somebody's gonna have to give us permission for the, for the lot line.
Yeah.
Second, second.
So variants, well, well, whatever.
All in favor? Well, we have to go, well. I, therefore, based on the findings in this worksheet, and any conditions listed below, the planning board concludes that the proposed project is or is not eligible for the thirty percent expansion while remaining within the required shoreline setback area. I give you to make motion that this is eligible for the expansion. Second. Second, all in favor? Conditions, if any, required to ensure compliance with the above sections of the Ransay Town Code. So I think one of the conditions would be. Variants. For the sidelines of side property lines.
So. My understanding is. Right, it's a non-conforming structure where it is now, the relocation, as long as we're not making things more non-conforming, even though you're still within a setback, there isn't a variance needed, and I believe the language in thirty gives the planning board the ability to approve that as long as, again, we're not making it more non-conforming, so if we're six feet back and we're gonna be eight feet back, we're, we're improving the conditions there. Right, but I think if, once we start going the opposite way, that's when we may need to start.
And that's, yeah, and that's why we're trying to pull it back from the lake.
However, the side setbacks.
Yes.
Did you say that was gonna decrease?
Yeah, because right now the shed is in the side and the walkway is in the side, we're taking those out, and the house is, what did I say, about ten feet into the setbacks, we're gonna bring it.
It was shown on the plan, I don't have.
Yeah, I've got, we're gonna bring it back to the board if you try and get it over. But that seems to be when you ask for.
Yeah, that, that walkway on the half, that side and the shed are both being removed and the whole structure is actually moving. Because it says here, yeah, the.
There's a four foot mark there or else.
Yep, yep, it's coming over forty, yeah.
And.
Back towards the house.
Uh, no, if you're the lady.
Away, away from the property line.
It's the side.
I get to.
We're going this way.
Yep.
But we can't get too far.
Okay.
Yeah, so where it's eight feet into the twenty foot setback, it will only be the new structure, only four feet, so my opinion is it's, you're not making it any more non-conforming.
Yeah, okay. Does the basement can count as the thirty percent expansion?
In this one, it would, because this is a complete new structure, and the way thirty eight reads is if you're taking an existing dwelling and putting a full basement, the basement does not count as an expansion, only if you're utilizing the existing full structure. But once you do a complete demo. All space would count if it's habitable space in a basement.
Or fifty percent of this structure, you're keeping fifty.
Correct, yeah.
With your thirty percent.
But this one is a full.
Correct, yeah, the hill is just too steep.
Yeah. It's just, so the thirty percent would be inclusive of a walkout basement space if it's constructed above six foot eight headspace, which would make it habitable space.
And then on the height restriction, that.
It's not part of the ordinance right now.
Well, I, again.
For existings.
Yeah, I. It is my understanding that we're supposed to be following.
Is it going higher? Is it gonna go higher?
Well, because, yeah, because right now it's. You know, it's sort of sitting down low, we're gonna raise it not more than three feet, first floor.
So is it?
Well, I don't think that comes into play once you do a brand new build, that's not how the wording is referenced, that, that is only referenced under putting a foundation under existing dwelling. Right, you can't raise an existing dwelling three feet, higher than three feet. But this is treated as basically a new construction, and what the board is agreeing to is there's no alternative to get the new construction outside the hundred feet, right?
Yeah.
So the new construction is gonna be approved or hopefully approved inside the hundred feet, but it's still the entire envelope is a new construction.
Which, I guess, interpretation, I mean, I guess for thirty five years, we've always said whether it's rebuilt or not, treated with the same, so it was, you know, not more than three feet, but.
Yeah. We're not gonna go down in this instance too, right, because this is right at lake level again, so.
And if you've seen the site, the height, the higher would be better, so.
So what do we do with the height restriction?
Well, that's.
There is not one right now.
Is, well.
Thirty five feet.
Well, that's, if, that's what you're saying, stated in thirty eight. In chapter one thousand, which is state of Maine shoreline zoning, which in any unorganized territory is, right, enforced, and my understanding is in, in a town, they have to at minimum enforce chapter one thousand and can be more restrictive if they wish.
Right, so you have to be part of the ordinance right now, it's not.
No, it does not have to be for a party. So we can, we can reach out to the town attorney if we want interpretation on that.
Well, I think we should. And then if we treat this as a. New bill, that restricts the height requirement to twenty foot.
It would depend on what the setback is, if it's in, in that.
It's in, yeah.
In that seventy five foot area.
There it is, yeah.
Too steep and there's a well there, you're not.
Yeah, from twenty five to seventy five, it would then be twenty feet, from seventy five to a hundred would be the twenty five feet.
So we don't go off of the existing structure height at that point because it's a new build.
Correct, right. It's not an expansion.
So we need to figure out the follow-up, I think we can reach out to the town attorney on this.
Yeah, I can reach out to her tomorrow, yeah.
So the total square foot of the structure, if you put a new basement under.
Well, I think, let's see what they say, the, the, it's something that.
The current one is eighteen by thirty.
Eighteen by twenty eight. And, um. So we were gonna put our thirty percent on the back, which would be two feet. And a stairway, because it's.
She'd only be twenty by thirty.
Yeah, so I, I, on the couch here, I had sort of said. Yeah, so I, I, on the couch sheet, I had sort of said, you know, we possibly could be four hundred and twenty seven square feet. On first floor, two feet, second floor, two feet, and then a seven by seventeen like stairway out back. So. Not a lot of square footage to add thirty percent add on to that.
But as far as floors, is it, it's gonna be a full basement and a first floor on top of it?
Right, cuz foundation.
Yeah, so the plan was to do a full walkout foundation with living space.
No, no, just full basement, just to get it up out of the ground and get it, cuz Carl, if you've seen the the sites like this, right? And so the idea was, we thought we'd keep the floor three feet, do the first floor, the second floor, well, you know, when you drive up, you're seeing the roof.
Yeah.
And so we raise it three feet and we come down a hill or a couple of feet, we move it back, gets up the hill a little bit, then we can get. A door into the back of the house with a little stairway. And then have our addition at the back of the house.
So the plan was a full basement first and second.
Right, so right now it's a crawl space, like.
That's where the height. Really come into effect.
Yeah, so right now, if you took that, you're, what you're proposing is thirteen hundred and sixty eight square feet of living space.
Right, cuz right now they have, I don't know, twelve hundred, something like that, so.
Twelve hundred. If you have eighteen times.
Twelve thirty two, I get a lakeside porch and the first floor.
Oh, yeah, in the porch.
Right, it's open, so that's square footage.
I just think we need to clarify that height thing, it's all, and if it's nothing, it's nothing. Other than that. We gotta get, that's why we need to get chapter thirty eight figured out.
But I, I, I would assume Kristen would respond very quickly on this question, I think that, yeah.
So we make a condition. Want to make the motion to condition that we reach out to the town attorney for clarification on.
While we can't really.
No.
So you're gonna table pending response from Kristen.
Yeah, and then we can vote on it in two weeks.
I think that's fair, is that fair? Construction is not gonna start tomorrow.
Not gonna start tomorrow, it's just trying to get everybody lined up and he.
No, I understand.
Thinking that if he keeps delaying, they're gonna.
The only thing, I just, we have, we have to make. You know, the right decision, because if not, somebody else is coming in, we got the same problem, so. If you would just give us the time to reach out to our attorney, find out, that's it, and we can vote on it at the next meeting on the, same ten.
Yes.
They.
May ten, yeah, so may ten. So we're gonna, I make most of the table is pending determination from the town attorney on this chapter one thousand.
I'll shoot that now, Marty. We get a second. Need a second on the motion to table it. Till we can get clarification from the town attorney.
I'll make a second.
On favor. Great, so determination, we have to do the determination is denied?
No. And then we're back, we've already gone through all this, we get. Let's go for it. We just voted on it.
Thank you. All right, Shoreland zoning permit amendment reconsideration to Avanac Bureau mapped zero two eight lot zero zero three. Acting CEO has advised board regarding site plans and other questions. Do you have a fact finding sheet?
Now, didn't we vote on this the last time, the last meeting, did we go through this?
I thought we did, when we did the site.
We did one in February when we, or was it? January and December, whenever the original cycle off was done, we did that, we did not, we have not done it since.
Well, this is eleven.
Okay, so this one, two.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, this is one that we restricted the height limit on. Then we had to go back and change it.
Yeah, and then he may, then he provides a site plan, push it back outside seventy five feet. To get to the twenty five feet, right, and then when we push it back, we became in conflict with the road, or the, I'll call it the driveway, on the corner of the driveway.
So what do we wanna do with this? So, we're gonna get clarification from the town attorney on this chapter one thousand, I think Carl's right on it. It makes sense, it makes sense that Carl's right. But do we? If it comes back that we don't have to follow it, he can go back to his original plan.
Yeah, with with the structure back to the, where the existing structure lines, right, not making it more non.
Right, I think you're right on that, it makes sense that you're right, we'll check. But I don't know how to go about the, I mean, we can improve their application now.
I say table that until we get.
I don't know what he's gonna take a little closer down there.
No, I, I've talked to him.
He was going to zoom in, but I guess he just hasn't.
So I, I did some digging, further digging on this, I went through a bunch of the property deeds and pulled some plaques from seventies of the properties and stuff, there is a road association there. There's nothing that, there's no map or anything I can see that calls out like a right of way. The language in the deeds really just states like there's a right of way based on where the existing road is for the road, so it's one of those, you know.
So it can't, it's an old camp road.
Yeah, so it's not really like enforceable.
Right, exactly, he could move, he could have the road moved if he wanted to, he can get it off my lot.
Yeah, and and I think it goes back to the earlier thing about. I don't know if there's a setback for that road technically, because there's no right of way, it's a private drive.
Exactly.
So I don't think we're making it any more nonconforming once it pushes back and becomes in conflict with everything.
I believe I, I believe that I've kind of brought that up, like if that road, if there was no right, if there's no right of way on that road, he couldn't say, get the road out of my yard.
There, there is language that states there is a shared drive between whatever set and lot, it also goes into the septic, there's a shared well. How they all have common interest in it, we're all responsible for it, but there's no meat to the bone.
There's no, this is not a legal road, basically, so he can build the house right on top of it.
Well, and if you go, if you go down, you know, to his house and hang a right, I've met a guy that's at six Avanac Road, he wants to rebuild that camp, and that camp is even closer to the road than two, I mean, it's, it's. In the road, for, for conversation sake, so. I think the height, he's willing to go back to seventy five feet to keep the height. Right, um, he also said he'd even be willing, cuz I think it was shown as a walkout basement to not do the walkout backfill around it to, you know, prevent. The extra height on the foundation, just do a built up door or something, so. I was under the impression that the whole lot was, if we pushed it back, we were creating a setback issue.
Well, that too, because of the road, getting close to the road, but we, I mean, none of us were. You know, it does show the road on map, my, my thing was, is it a legal road or not? So we don't really care. So we just put it in, so it was the easiest spot to put it and build a camp.
A bunch of kids.
All the neighbors were fine with it at the time.
Done.
So, do you wanna go through the fact finding and then put a table in at the end? Or do you wanna do it now, on fact finding?
We could approve the application, I mean, in two weeks, it'll come, it'll come back, I mean, if, if we find that he could do what he wanted to originally, he can come back.
Yeah, you can put a condition on it too, that, you know, the height, you know, the height restriction is gonna be chapter, I mean, I don't know what type of condition.
Granted, pending height restriction.
Confirmation, I mean.
Cause there, why don't we just approve the application, just reach out, tell us, so you might wanna check back in two weeks.
Well, I'm gonna be dealing with the guy, I'm gonna do a location, state inspection out there, you know, he's, he's looking to complete the building permit, application, get lined up with folks too, so. I'll be out there a fair bit, I'll have conversations with him, so if we do determine there's.
Just approve the application.
Change, I can only learn.
Right, yeah, right.
Standing, the applicant has standing to present this application as the owner, motion.
Are you?
Second.
Second.
All in favor. The planning board has the authority to consider this request for expansion, reduck, relocation and replacement. Of the structure as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash one, thirty eight dash three dash three dash four and thirty eight dash three dash three dash five of the Ransay Town Code. The code enforcement officer made the determination on call one twenty eight, twenty twenty three, the applicant proposed building permit is within the required setbacks. From the normal high water line of the water body range in the lake, and so the application is then referred to the planning board.
I'm gonna do the motion that the planning board has authority to consider. Uh, the request for replacement of the structure.
Second. All in favor. Determination whether the practical alternatives exist as required by section thirty eight dash three dash three dash one dash two. Thirty eight dash three dash three dash four and thirty eight dash three dash three dash five dash two of the Ransay Town Code, the planning board shall consider the following. The size of the law. The shape and slope of the land. The location of other structures on a property and on adjacent properties. The location of the septic system and other onsite soul suitable for septic systems. The existing architectural plan, the potential for souls erosion, the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. Based on three dash A. Above the planning board finds there is or is not a practical alternative to retain the original floor area and volume of the structure within the required setback area. Motion is or is not.
Planning board finds there is not a practical.
Second. Second, all in favor. Due to the nature and size of expansion, the planning board requests that the written notice is or is not mailed to the director butters. Of the property as part of the consideration of significant ad- adverse impact on, upon the value and right of quiet possession of surrounding properties.
We've already sent those names out, so.
Cross that out. Therefore, based on the findings in this worksheet, and any conditions listed below, the planning board concludes that the proposed project is or is not eligible. For the thirty percent expansion while remaining within the required shoreline setback area.
Motion, the proposed project is eligible for thirty percent expansion.
Second. I'm sure, all in favor. Conditions, if any, required to ensure compliance with the above sections of the Ransay Town Code. See, the condition is. And the determination. Chapter one thousand.
Right.
All right, so that's table.
I'm not table, no, we should vote on it, we should approve the application as it sits, I think.
With the condition.
I think we should.
Determination, based upon the proceedings, findings and conclusions, the application for the project within shoreline zoning is hereby granted, granted with the no noted conditions. Or denied due to the findings of the above.
Do we want to predict that condition on that, I said. I say we just grant it, and then. Somebody can reach out, talk with Carl, reach out, talk to him. And tell him he can go back to his original plan if he wanted to.
The only question I would have is if we approve it where it is now, setback. Right, and then we find out we don't need to enforce the restrictions, move back forward, we have to come back for approval.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, I don't know if we can put a condition on this one that would.
Satisfy that?
Hey.
I would like to just.
Said you granted with the noted condition of pending determination of town attorney regarding chapter one thousand height restrictions. If it's determined that the height restriction does not. Apply. He can, he can resume the original application as applied in wherever the day was.
Second, second.
As determined on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Are you good with that, Carl, I mean?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I think that's appropriate, cuz that, he wants to kind of get moving through the process, you know, and start lining people up, he's got concerns that it's not gonna be approved as to some, so I, I think it's reasonable to.
So based upon the preceding findings, conclusion, application for this project within shoreline zoning is hereby granted. Motion, Wes.
I make a motion.
Second. Bring it, there, I'm second, all in favor. All right, very good. Sorry. Yeah. All right, next meeting, May tenth, twenty twenty three at six P M.
Directly following.
Directly following the public hearing. All right, need a motion to return.
Six, twenty eight.
Second. Just, all in favor. I've got to go straight with Kate work.